Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, please, for Monday, December 16th, Meeting of the St. John Common Council. Just wanna let people know that we have Councillor Norton is in online and we have Councillor Harris is available online. So we have two of the councillors that are available online. And I'd like to welcome tonight Mariah Darling to our table, our latest councillor. There she is over there, our latest councillor. Congratulations. So as we always do, we start the meeting off with a land acknowledgement and councillor Harris was gonna read that tonight for us. Councillor Harris, are you good to go from where you are?
Your worship, I don't have that in front of me. Sorry, I was just looking for it.
That's okay, I can read it tonight. I'll send it over.
I was ready to do it until I had to come in virtually, so I apologize.
Nope, that's no problem. So I'll read it tonight and we'll pass it over to you in 2025. "The land on which the city of St. John or Monauquist is situated is the traditional territory of the Wolushtewee. The Wolushtewee, along with their indigenous neighbours, the Mi'kmaq and Pesto Toma'kari, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and to resources." So we'd like to ask people to take a few moments to reflect on that. Okay, City Clerk, over to you for the first item.
Thank you, your worship, and I just wanted to add to the public record that councillor-elect Mariah Darling has signed the oath of office today, earlier today, and is now councillor Mariah Darling, so again, congratulations. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of December 9th.
December 9th, minutes, councillor Sullivan and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Let me get my team back up there. Just wanna make sure that we can see the councillors. Oh, there we go, we're good. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is approval of the agenda, and we do have a few additions. The first one would be 17.1 from Committee of the Whole, and this is with respect to 2029 Canada Games MOU with Envision St. John. 17.2 is a Committee of the Whole recommendation with respect to a proceeding against BGC Engineering. And 17.3 is a Committee of the Whole recommendation with respect to Marco Polo Letter of Intent. And there is one additional staff report that was submitted to council earlier today. It would become item 16.1, and it's for the 2024 Utility Fund Capital Reserve.
All right. So I will take a motion to approve the agenda. Councillor Stewart and councillor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item number six, Members' Comments.
Disclosure of Conflict.
My apologies, sorry. Item four, Disclosure of Conflict of Interest.
Councillor Ogden, over to you for 17.3. Excellent, okay, thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
And next is the consent agenda.
Over to you, deputy, to read the consent agenda.
Thank you, your worship. I would move 5.1 through to 5.9, please.
Yeah, I'll take a second, or councillor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
And next is item six, Members' Comments.
Members' Comments. Any Members' Comments tonight? Deputy, over to you for the first mayor's comments.
Thank you very much, your worship. First off, I'd like to wish everybody the best of the holiday season, regardless of how you celebrate it. And I would encourage anybody that can to come out to Harbour Lights' campaign at the city market this Friday morning at 6 o'clock. We will be there, serving up a terrific breakfast for you, and the mugs will be on sale as usual. I will add that there will be a toy box there at the front of the market if you have an extra toy that you want to donate, there'll be a place there for it. So I hope to see you all on Friday morning, bright and early. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Deputy councillor Redmond, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to send a special thank you, actually, to the staff of St. John Fire from Station Two that unfortunately had to come to my house yesterday. They were very professional. Everything is fine. And the staff from Ambulance New Brunswick are wonderful, and a special thank you to Amber and Lucas, who were just lovely with my mom. So, and I do wanna also say, I don't actually celebrate this time of the year, but I get into a lot of celebrations, so I encourage everybody that can join in on the fun, whether you're celebrating Christmas or Hanukkah, happy holidays. And I just wanted to say, welcome, Mariah Darling, great to have you at the table. I've been looking at an empty seat here for weeks, so I'm so thrilled, so thrilled to have you. I know you have a long history, actually, so your dad being mayor, your grandfather being at the table, but, you know, I'm sure that you have all of your highly intelligent, lots of experience in your own way of doing everything, so I appreciate that. So, welcome, welcome to council.
All right, thank you, councillor. Councillor, I'm just looking at the screen to make sure I haven't missed anyone. Councillor Harris, I see your hand up, I think. No?
No, not for me.
Oh, maybe it's that light bulb in the corner over there, I'm not sure what I'm saying. All right, sounds good. All right, next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Next is the public hearing, we'll have to skip that, it's scheduled to start at 6:30. So, item 10.1 on your agenda, under consideration of bylaws, is a subdivision bylaw amendment, money in lieu of land for public purposes, Housing Accelerator Fund.
Okay, so this one I'm sending over to Commissioner Poforoff to kick it off.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. Before you this evening is an amendment to the city's subdivision bylaw, which aligns with the goals of the Housing Accelerator Fund program. The proposed amendment introduces streamlined criteria for accepting money in lieu of land for public purposes in smaller-scale subdivisions. This change will allow such applications to be processed at the staff level, significantly reducing approval timelines for new residential lots. Additionally, the amendment includes an administrative update to facilitate the acquisition of land for public purposes specifically for active transportation infrastructure. And with that, I'll now hand it over to the senior planner, Mark Reed, for the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Your worship and council, the amendments are related to the assent of money in lieu of lands for public purposes, as set out in the subdivision bylaw. And what we did in accordance with our Housing Accelerator Fund application and the work on that, we identified a means of streamlining the acceptance of money in lieu of land for public purposes associated with smaller-scale subdivisions, and the intent on that is to bring housing to market quicker. What that will do, it will reduce the timelines for approval of those smaller-scale subdivisions, mostly involving new lots for residential development, and we anticipate that generally there would be a time-saving of between four and six weeks. The subdivision bylaw places an emphasis on acquiring money in lieu of land, as opposed to acquiring actual land, and that comes from the Recreation and Strategic Master Plan that we did a few years ago, where it was identified that we have an oversupply of parkland. Under the Community Planning Act, council assent is required when we are accepting money in lieu. So what we've done is we've developed a set of criteria that if approved through this bylaw amendment by council, that would eliminate the need to bring individual council reports and recommendations for each of these smaller-scale subdivisions. In terms of the criteria, staff would review the application, and that would involve both community planning staff and parks and public spaces, we would identify that, and if we determine that land is not required, then it would essentially check that box. Instances where land may be required would be larger-scale subdivisions involving multiple lots and new public streets, or developments that are adjacent to city-owned parks and parkland where we may want to acquire some extra land. The second criteria is that the site not be subject to a past council resolution that would direct us to take either land or money, so if it's not covered by that, it would check that box. As well, the proposed lots in the subdivision must either abut a new public street or access approved by the Planning Advisory Committee. There isn't really any time-saving for subdivisions that involve the dedication of a new public street, because that new public street would have to come before council anyway, so there would be no efficiency in reduced time for those. And also, fewer than five lots must be proposed, and that speaks to the majority of subdivision applications that we've seen recently involving smaller residential subdivisions, and it really speaks to the size of the land, as lots larger than that are generally, those would generally be able to be developed by either some other different form of housing, such as an apartment building, or that would be the threshold where you'd get into, you know, perhaps some efficiencies with a public street. And again, the intent is to develop housing faster in our community. We also have a housekeeping amendment with respect to pedestrian walkways. These are currently required in the bylaw to link cul-de-sacs with adjacent lands and streets and active transportation infrastructure identified in the Trails and Bike Ways strategic plan. One of the things that has happened since we adopted the Trails and Bike Ways strategic plan back in 2010, that identified an extensive trail and bikeway network. However, because it was created prior to the 2011 completion of the municipal plan, the Trails and Bike Ways strategic plan really didn't benefit of that future land use concept that we've brought forth with the municipal plan and further in the zoning bylaw. So as a result, the Trails and Bike Ways strategic plan really doesn't fully align with the development vision established in the municipal plan. So what we're recommending is an amendment to eliminate some references to the Trails and Bike Ways strategic plan. In addition, we've adopted Move SJ, which really takes a focus with respect to active transportation infrastructure of having on-street infrastructure, such as, you know, bike lanes and shared trailways, such as we've seen, such as the infrastructure we've recently seen constructed down on Charlotte Street with the reconstruction. Public notice is not required under the Community Planning Act. We did have this before, the Planning Advisory Committee for a report and recommendation. We had one member in the audience speak in support of it, given the fact that it would bring housing to market sooner. Staff and PEC recommend that the proposed subdivision bylaw amendment be adopted. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any questions this evening for staff? If not, I'll take a mover on that. The deputy and councillor Ogden, councillors Norton and Harris, you could up there, it's hard to see whether your hands are up. Good, okay. I'll call the question then. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
For that one, we do require, it's two readings, but I'll read the first one. A law to amend the subdivision bylaw of the city of St. John.
I'll take a motion to approve, second reading by title. Thank you, and for councillor Low, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the subdivision bylaw of the city of St. John.
All right, next item.
Next would be the BIA bylaw amendment, item 10.2 on your agenda.
Sending this over to Commissioner Poforoff to...
Not on this, your worship.
No, no. Why am I so confused tonight? 10.2, that's you, John.
That would be mine, thank you. So for the BIA, council will recall at its last meeting, it approved the annual BIA budget, as well as gave first and second reading to the bylaw associated with this. And so tonight, we're asking council to give third reading, third and final reading of the bylaw. And just as a reminder, that in this case, the bylaw levy has remained the same at 16 cents per $100 of assessed value for those properties within the BIA.
Okay, so I will take a resolution to approve the reading by entirety. Councillor Sullivan and councillor Stewart, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Oh, it's upside down and reading by title. It's the first one.
No, entirety?
Yep.
That's correct. So, a law to amend the bylaw number BIA-2 Business Improvement Levy bylaw, be enacted by the common council of the city of St. John, as follows. The Business Improvement Levy bylaw, the city of St. John, enacted on the third day of January 2006, is amended by one repealing section two thereof and inserting the following. A levy of 16 cents for each $100 of assessed value is hereby imposed for 2025 upon non-residential property within the business improvement area established by bylaw number BIA-1 Business Improvement Area bylaw, enacted on the fifth day of January 2004.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve, reading by title. The deputy and councillor Redmond on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend BIA bylaw number BIA-2 Business Improvement Levy bylaw.
Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 15.1, under General Correspondence, and it's a letter from L. Graham requesting speed bumps installed on Milletge Avenue. There's a staff recommendation to receive this for information.
Just FYI, that will go off to traffic and the requests will go into the queue, so that's, will happen anyway. So councillor Ogden, do you have a question on that?
I just wanted to comment, Mrs. Graham's called me a few times, very worried about, as everybody else is about speeding.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Sullivan. I'll take a second there on it. Councillor Darling, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 15.2, a letter from M. Clark regarding Snow Angels program. Recommendation is to refer to CAO.
Refer to CAO. The deputy, councillor Darling, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next would be the staff report that was sent out today, and it would become item 16.1, and it's with respect to the 2024 Utility Fund Capital Reserves.
Okay, you have the, thank you, perfect. On the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
And next, we are to the recommendations from Committee of the Whole.
Okay.
And so the first one of those would be item 17.1, with respect to the 2029 Canada Games MOU with Envision St. John. And I'll just read out the resolution for the record. The city enter into a memorandum of understanding with Envision St. John and Lily Lake Pavilion, Inc., generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on December 16, 2024, regarding the securing of a venue for the 2029 Canada Games, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said memorandum of understanding, and further, that the city enter into a memorandum of understanding with Envision St. John and the St. John Aquatic Commission, generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on December 16, 2024, regarding the securing of a venue for the 2029 Canada Games, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said memorandum of understanding, and further, that the city enter into a memorandum of understanding with Envision St. John, generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on December 16, 2024, regarding the securing of a venue for the 2029 Canada Games, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said memorandum of understanding.
Okay, I know councillor Darling has her light on, and I know because she was sworn in after close but before open, what's the proper?
Oh, in this case, councillor Darling should remove herself just for these three.
Oh, for these three, for the vote?
Because in this case, wouldn't have had the background materials.
Right, okay. Yes.
There are two other councillors here who weren't there for the discussion, those online?
But they would have the materials that were sent to them as part of the agenda package.
Okay.
Okay.
In this case, the councillor did not receive the Committee of the Whole documentation.
Okay. Okay, I got a mover. Take a second there on it. Councillor Low on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Excuse me. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is 17.2, and this would be a legal proceeding against BGC Engineering Westwells mediation, update and recommended settlement, and the resolution would be that the city settle its claim against BGC Engineering, Inc., in the Westwells litigation on the terms and conditions outlined to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held December 16, 2024, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any documents necessary to affect the settlement.
Thank you. Councillor Low, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is 17.3, Marco Polo, LOI.
Okay, councillor Ogden's leaving for this one. Okay, councillor Ogden's leaving for this one. Yep.
And the resolution for this would be that the city enter into the letter of intent in the form presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on November 12, 2024, with the St. John Port Authority and Marco Polo Harbourfront Historical Village and Museum, Inc., and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the said letter of intent.
Mover councillor Redwine, second or councillor Stewart on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Your worship, we have completed all the agenda items with the exception of the public hearing, so it would be appropriate to take a recess until 6:30.
Okay, six minutes for a recess. Do I need to get in that motion?
Yep.
Take a motion from the deputy councillor Redwine. Okay, six minutes, back for 6:30. Thank you. One, two, three. That's going closed. Let's only this, need to hang on to this. Okay, I think we're back here, I think at 6:30. City Clerk, over to you. I'm going to adjourn the meeting again, please.
Thank you, your worship. Next item is 9.1, it's a public hearing, and this is with respect to Housing Accelerator Fund Zoning Bylaw Reform Amendments. There is a Planning Advisory Committee report and staff presentation.
This one is going over to the commissioner for the intro. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. I'm pleased to introduce this next item. This is a significant milestone of the Housing Accelerator Fund program that staff and the team has been working on for a number of months now. This evening, staff will be presenting the zoning bylaw reform amendments, and this is obviously linked to the Housing Accelerator Fund agreement with CMHC that was signed in January of this year. The zoning bylaw reform is designed to reduce regulatory barriers to housing, streamline the approval process, and enable a broader range of housing options by encouraging gentle density and missing middle developments. Key outcomes of these amendments include allowing up to four units by right on all serviced residential lots, increased height allowances in mid-rise residential zones, and enhanced densification in intensification areas and primary corridors. At its November 26 meeting, the Planning Advisory Committee unanimously endorsed the staff recommendation. For this evening's presentation, we will have three speakers, starting with our consultant from Stentec presenter Jamie Burke. He will present their research on recent zoning best practices and consultation outcomes. Following that, director Punkage Nalavde and planner Yeva Matson will deliver the staff presentation. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Burke. Thank you.
Mr. Burke, welcome and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, your worship and members of council, and thank you for the introduction, commissioner, so we'll get, we'll get right added here tonight. So my name is Jamie Burke, I'm the Atlantic Lead for Urban Planning with Stentec, and I'm a senior associate with the firm. Whenever we start a public meeting of any kind in a new venue, we always start with a safety moment, so it's that time of year, it just do us all a favor, including our emergency responders when you get home, either today or tomorrow, just check the batteries in your smoke detector. We know we all have a lot of things plugged in to the walls, so that would be most appreciated. A little bit about who we are, I guess, as a company. We're founded in 1954 in Edmonton, largely an engineering firm. We have offices all over the world, so we're publicly traded in New York and Toronto. About 32,000, 31,000, 32,000 employees, and while we pride ourselves with a global presence, we also have a local presence. So we have an office right here in the City of St. John, Moncton and Fredericton, as well as Charlottetown, St. John's, Halifax and Sydney. So I guess briefly, I guess what was our role in the project? So we, I guess, helped your existing planning department with just, literally just a bit of horsepower. I mean, you have the expertise in-house to do this, we just provide a bit of, a bit of extra bodies to get it over the line, given the short turnaround. So I think we're all familiar with what zoning bylaws are, those are the regulations that regulate land use, and we have the zoning bylaw here in the city. And the reform process is really about kind of keeping pace, addressing current urban planning and demographic changes, promoting sustainable development, and largely, in this case, about increasing housing availability and helping communities keep pace with growth, excuse me, and changes, which we've, we know over the last several years, we've changed considerably. So I guess one of the key things that we were asked to do was look at what other cities are doing, who have been through the, a little bit more advanced on the housing accelerator side of things, so what are they doing with respect to residential density, building heights, lot sizes, setbacks, et cetera? And we looked at HRM or Halifax, Halifax Regional Municipality, the City of Edmonton, City of Calgary, Kitchener, Hamilton, and several others, including Summerside, Revelstoke and a few more. Just to give ourselves, I guess, a snapshot of what's happening around, around the country. So in a nutshell, what did we find is that we need more housing options. There's various approaches being implemented across Canada, and there's no one-size-fits-all solution. Generally, four units are observed in all cities as per the Housing Accelerator Fund requirements. Most cities are permitting up to six units in strategic areas, in some cases more. There's smaller lot sizes and reduced setbacks that we're accustomed to seeing here in Atlantic Canada. And generally, the added density is capped at anywhere from three to six stories in height, which you'll see is consistent with what's being presented to you this evening. Reduced parking requirements and, generally speaking, providing additional density through garden suites and accessory dwelling units or ADUs. So Halifax is our, I guess, our closest example, and they have a new housing accelerator zone, and as you'll see, some, with consistency here across the, across the country, allowing a variety of housing typologies, but really, you'll see that in the bottom point under Halifax, where allowing up to five or more units on an individual lot. Hamilton, similar again, allowing a variety of housing typologies within their low-density zones, and again, permitting up to four units per lot. So you can see some trends here already, even after the first two cities. Kitchener in their low-density zones, allowing again up to four units, and then in specific zones going up to six, which again is consistent with what you'll see here, here this evening. And then Calgary, again, they have a variety of low-density residential districts, allowing for many different housing options. And again, up to four units in low-density areas, and in those multi-residential districts or mid-rise zones, allowing more than, more than four units on an individual lot. And then rounding out with Edmonton certainly being the most aggressive, you can see going up to eight units per lot in even their small scale or low-density, low-density zones. That is a major change of the cities we looked at. So I'm going to breeze through some of these slides, because Punkage and Yeva are going to get into this in greater detail with your specific amendments, for the sake of time. But just wanted to show, you'll see highlighted in orange where your provisions are inspired from each particular area, so you can see, Hamilton goes as low as, or as small, I guess, as 225 square meters per unit. That's not the smallest that we've seen across the country, but we thought that was a reasonable, a reasonable fit for the city based on lot blocks here in the, in the city. Lot coverage or the amount of area with on a piece of property that can be developed, you can see Calgary varies anywhere from 40% to 70%, and we settle at 60, which you'll see here momentarily. Height restrictions are, again, they vary across the country, as we said earlier, there's no one-size-fits-all solution, and there's some, certainly some variation across the, across the country, but Calgary was, seemed to be in that sweet spot with 8.6 to 12 meters in height, depending on the particular zone. Front yard setbacks are largely derived from Edmonton. Rear yard is a bit of a, I guess, a misogyn of Halifax, where it depends on the height of the building, which is really what the, what the rear yard setback would be. Obviously, the higher the building, the larger the, the larger the setback. Side yards are down as low as .9 in places like Hamilton, and we, you can see, we've been inspired by Calgary, which is in, again, that sweet spot of 1.2 to 3 meters. Lots of variation across the country on parking. Again, it largely depends if you're on a transit line, where you are with respect to proximity to services, but lots of variety, lots of parking reductions and flexibility in new, in new zoning bylaws. And a big push on accessory dwelling units, and you can see that in Halifax, those ADUs or additional dwelling unit, accessory dwelling units are included in the, in the four units that are permitted as of, as of right, which allows some variety in terms of the conversion of, of existing or, or new developments. And then amenity space, you can see we've settled with the Edmonton example of 7.6 square meters per dwelling units, that gives the development officer some flexibility to determine how that 7.5 square meters is, is determined. At the open houses, we assisted the city with a variety of slides, just showing how units could be converted into four units, what's a secondary suite, what's a garden suite. Again, just to give people some comfort to see things, to let them know, we're not talking big tall buildings, a lot of this is going to be conversion, it's going to happen over time, and importantly, it's going to be, it's going to be very gradual. On the mid-rise zone, we have certainly seen, in some cases, an increase in height, so you'll see in the RM zone here in the city, that height is going to increase, and you can see inspiration from Hamilton there at 22 meters. And again, amenity space going up to being consistent with 7.5 square meters per dwelling unit, and again, some parking variation and landscaping requirements. And again, we just wanted to show people that, again, this is, we're not talking about things that we think are unfamiliar with people, a lot of times, the building footprint is going to stay the same, and we're just going to see conversions, right? We're going to see some of these older, larger, largely single-unit dwellings being converted into three, four, in some cases four, or in some cases, even in an intensification area, it could be six units in key, in key areas, which Punkage will walk through here momentarily. So listening to the public, obviously, is a big part of anything that we, as planners, do, and we just have three slides here to kind of capture a little bit of, of what we heard throughout the process. The project really got kicked off back in, at the end of September, on the 25th, at the Lily Lake Pavilion, where we heard a variety of comments about the need for new housing options or, and housing affordability. Some people concerned with the impact, of course, on people's property values, you know, asking for revisions to regulations to make it easier to, for people to invest in secondary suites and garden units. And again, people asking for reductions in parking, asking us to rethink the way we look at parking from a planning perspective, which in a lot of cases hasn't been reevaluated since some of our zoning bylaws were first introduced. The second event was an open house on November 7 at the Crown Plaza. And just again, some, some key themes, I guess, of what we heard from the, from just mingling with people or when people approached the microphone. Again, that encouragement or desire to look for reduced onsite parking requirements, like asking us to maybe go further, being mindful of emergency services and the need for them to be able to get in and around buildings, asking for interest in increasing the lot coverage requirements, where we bumped that up to 60 from 50 and potentially going beyond that. And again, support for mixed-use commercial developments, the importance of amenity space, some interesting questions about how accessory dwelling units and additional dwelling units were going to be billed from a utility point of view, so again, we think that's... So again, we think that's, there's a bit of a communications piece there that needs to be worked into this as things roll out. And again, something we always hear is, you know, can you do more to let people know of the changes? And we know that's a common piece of feedback that we receive. And then the last, I guess, milestone before the public hearing here tonight was the November 26 PAC meeting. And we heard, you know, pros and cons towards the changes, you know, from the, I guess, those speaking in favors, large homes isn't existing to provide conversion options for family members, alternative sources of income, and that may allow people to access the housing market a little more quickly. Members of the community reminding, I guess, us and PAC members that the implementation will be gradual. Some concerns raised about reduced parking. Again, everybody has a different notion of parking. Not everybody owns a vehicle. Some people have more than one vehicle, so we know that's always a bit of a touchy subject and it largely depends on where the development is being carried out. So again, you'll see some flexibility in the provisions before you tonight. Asking specifically to look at the proximity and setbacks in the residential zone as they approach low-density areas. So that's one thing that was taken away. And then some more general comments about the need to look at parks and open spaces holistically, where in and around these areas where additional density is going to be considered, looking at building design to make sure we have enough articulation and interest in building façades so we don't get those large, uninteresting sterile blocks. And some questions raised about, you know, where did the amenities-based requirements come, which of course are good questions and those were answered at the PAC meeting. So you'll see a similar drawing here with Punkage and Yeva in a second, but this is the general development goal, right? It's to introduce a variety of options, which currently there may be barriers in some of those options. And this is really about making the regulations easier to understand, more focus on increasing the supply in different ways, right? So spreading that topology out across the zones and this is what we would eventually like to see. Yes, there can be some, you know, six-story buildings in some key locations of the city, but those other six and four units are going to be capped at three stories. And again, it's going to be a gentle increase to pick up that missing middle housing that's currently, that's currently missing. So your worshiped members of council, thank you for the opportunity. I hope that gives some justification of where the background piece came from for the amendments and I'll turn it over to your planning director to continue.
Thank you.
Good evening, your worship and members of council and to the community that may be following this presentation this evening. This is the public hearing presentation for City of St. John's zoning bylaw reform. So in spring of 2023, the Government of Canada launched the Housing Accelerator Fund to support local governments in creating transformational changes to boost housing supply. City of St. John's project is driven by our half-action plan and is guided by a deadline of Feb. 1, 2025. We formally launched the project in September 2024 and we've had a short run, but we have a deadline, which is why we've been sort of moving through it at pace. In January 2024, City of St. John received funding to implement its half-action plan, which included eight initiatives shown on the screen, all of which are aimed at accelerating and boosting supply of housing. Some of these initiatives have created incentives, some of them have created policies for incentivizing affordable housing. This particular initiative that staff have brought forward this evening deals with removing regulatory barriers that tend to slow down the supply of housing and make housing more expensive. Our project focuses on unlocking barriers to housing, reducing red tape, expediting approval processes, increasing diversity and choice and affordability of homes. The zoning bylaw reform initiative aims to remove barriers and promote housing options by doing the following: allowing up to four units as of right on all service lots, allowing up to six units by right on all lots located within intensification areas, increasing the maximum permitted height in mid-rise residential zones to six stories, encouraging higher density near post-secondary institutions and primary transit corridors, and lastly, permitting garden suites and secondary suites in all residential zones. So the city currently has 11 residential zones across the city and some of them cater to the areas beyond the primary development area where there is no servicing. These amendments affect five residential zones within the primary development area. There are other residential zones within the PDA such as the RC Urban Centre and high-rise residential zones, which already permit higher densities and therefore are not affected by these zoning amendments. Additionally, as some of you may know, all homes constructed before 1967 with 10 rooms or more can already be converted into multi-dwelling units up to six units. So we've had some innovative concepts within our zoning bylaw going back many decades now. So this map is trying to show you all the areas that are affected. So the first map is just showing in green the primary development area and then the intensification areas in blue. And I will start to layer on all the residential zones that are getting affected. So this is the first one, that's the R1 zone. Now you can see R1 and R2. The third zone is RL. Fourth zone is RM, which is the medium-density zone, and then RSS, which are the zones where you have single-detached lots on rural-style roads. So in total, we have about over 14,000 properties that are getting affected by this amendment that is in front of you this evening. So administratively, we've had some key objectives for the low-rise residential zone. The first one was really reducing administrative barriers or red tape reduction, as we call it. Our goal was to simplify zoning by reducing the number of districts that allow similar uses. We currently have a system where you have, you know, zones that are separated by building type. If you have one unit, you're in a particular zone. If you have two units, you're in another zone. With our goal of allowing up to four to six units in every zone, we no longer need these multiple districts that promote the same type of development. So our goal here really is to simplify the zoning by reducing the number of districts, minimizing the need for costly rezoning applications that transition from single-detached to rowhouses, for example, reduce the reliance on Section 59 conditions and streamlining approval processes. To make this happen, the big move that we are proposing this evening is the consolidation of four residential zones into one. So we will be consolidating the R1, the R2, the RL and RSS into one comprehensive new low-rise residential zone. This zone also has another objective, which is permitting a diversity of housing options. So this one zone will permit all the housing choices that you've had in all of those districts. So no one is really losing out any development opportunity. The third item is really standardizing all the conditions. We've seen from the various rezoning applications that we continue to put Section 59 conditions. We are trying to standardize application requirements, landscaping requirements and other development standards within one district. Another key objective is really to ensure the efficient use of land, which can contribute to affordability of housing. This is achieved by allowing up to four units by right on all service lots and six units within designated intensification areas. We are trying to reduce minimum lot size requirements that can accommodate more compact development forms. In our case, we see an average lot size of about 550 square meters across the city. We are now proposing that the lot size be dropped to 225. And what does that mean? That means somebody can subdivide their property and have another home on it and they can sell it or they can have a larger lot and have multiple units on it, whether they want to condominiumize it, they want to rent it. There is just a lot more choice and options available now. Eliminating minimum ground floor or building footprint area requirements, what does that mean? Right now, the zoning bylaw speaks to how big the house must be within your lot. And we have other requirements such as lot coverage. So we already say you can cover up to 50% of lot area, so we don't need some of these other prescriptive requirements going forward. So we are doing away with that. We are maintaining a consistency of height of three stories for all these development forms. We are increasing lot coverage from 50 to 60% and that will allow you to build more within your site. And we are also conscious that for stormwater drainage, we need to protect open space within the site. So we've kept that threshold to 60%, which is not too much development at this point. So these changes in total support housing diversity, improved land utilization and consequently, therefore, greater affordability of housing for residents. So there is understandably some anxiety about these changes that may be leading to dramatic transformations in neighborhoods. However, it is important to emphasize, we are simply creating opportunities for a diversity of housing forms. We are not really forcing anyone to build to the maximum density. We will continue to see single-detached developments. We will continue to see people developing in patterns that we have, but there will be more opportunities for those who want to do something different. So we have created some renderings that can demonstrate how gentle densification can occur. For instance, an existing single-family home might add a second unit as an addition in the rear yard space or an extension or in the form of a garden suite in the rear yard space. Where previously the zoning bylaw only supported secondary suites in single-detached homes and that to limit it to just one secondary suite, the proposed amendments will permit a combination of secondary suites in the basement, for example, and a garden suite in the backyard. With the updated zoning, there are now endless permutations and combinations of housing types that can exist within the same zone, offering some flexibility of design. These examples demonstrate how changes can be implemented gradually and thoughtfully, ensuring that we maintain the character, the overall character of these homes that we see from the street while also meeting the growing needs of a city. So the low-rise residential zone also supports a development pattern called cluster housing or development groups, as long as these are with under three stories in height and on lots larger than 800 square meters. A cluster housing refers to two or more buildings, two or more buildings containing dwelling units located on a lot serviced by a private road. These are designed as unified developments and that's where you see large-scale rental projects or condominium projects. This approach encourages cohesive, well-planned housing developments that align with the broader goals of efficient land use. So the big changes for cluster housing really is the reduction of minimum lot size from 180 square meters to 140 square meters per unit. And these numbers are based on our research on best practices, but also some of the developments that we are working with developers, for example, the Belyer REOI. So we are looking at what proponents want to propose in our city and we are making sure that the zoning documents are ready to receive those developments. Other changes to this zone really include the reduction of requirements on continuous building length. So this was a prescriptive regulation before regulating the length to maximum 36 meters and we are now seeing that that length should be maxed out at six units. So it's more building design focused as opposed to a prescriptive number. So this rendering shows what potential intensification can look like with the various building forms that we are now allowing within the low-rise residential zone. The purpose of these amendments is really to increase choice and encourage affordability without forcing change. This map shows all the suburban residential R1, R2 and RL zones that would now be consolidated into one new low-rise zone and the intensification areas overlapping onto these districts. And now I'm turning to the medium-density category. So for the mid-rise zone, which mostly regulates higher-density apartments, the big move is really allowing a change in height to go from four stories up to six stories. This aligns with recent changes to building code, which now permits six-story wood frame construction. Other changes to this zone reflect reduced lot area requirements per unit to accommodate compact housing forms. Under our housing supply targets under the half project, we expect 70% of our new growth to come from these developments. Given this shift, our focus is on improving design and appearance of these buildings as well as ensuring adequate amenity space allocations, which directly contributes to the quality of life for our residents who live in these types of developments. So this diagram really shows what the change we are looking at currently. We allow up to four stories and relatively speaking, that's the scale for the new six-story buildings that we are proposing under this zone. So this is just another map that shows us all the mid-rise zones within the city. Many of them are actually intersecting with primary corridors and intensification areas, so we don't have another issue of going back and rezoning new sites. Most of them already align quite well where we have transit services and where we have amenities and proximity to employment centers. And this is the final map that shows the consolidation of the new RL zone and the mid-rise zones. So cumulatively, these are the areas that are being affected. Sites shown in orange are all the sites where six units on a lot will be permitted. And there were some existing sites which were zoned RL and we did not take their sort of development opportunity away. There are many sites that fall outside the intensification area, but they are allowed six units because those sites were previously zoned as RL. With that, I will hand over to Planner Yeva Matson to go through some of the other technical changes.
Okay. Thank you, Punkage, and thank you, your worship and council. I promise not to take up too much of your time, but I do want to touch on a couple of big changes to the other sections of our bylaw. Now that Punkage has kind of gone over that overarching large-zone change and we've talked about other cities, we just wanted to touch on Section 59 conditions, which as you know, are some common red tape we run into in this city. They've been put onto a lot of properties for a long time. Staff did do a bit of research and we looked at the last two years and what were the most common Section 59 conditions placed upon properties. And these included increased front yard landscaping requirements, pedestrian connectivity, building design, and then defined-site plan requirements. So we did this review and so when we were looking at the new zones, we decided to kind of recommend some changes to the rest of our bylaw to better align with what we saw with Section 59s and what would better help create better, improved buildings, pretty much. So landscaping, in the landscaping section of our bylaw, we're proposing a couple of changes just to increase the quality of landscaping. And this would include better design requirements such as buffering between mid-rise buildings and low-rise projects using trees and shrubs. It would require some 30% of the required front yard to be soft landscaped. And then when a developer creates a small-scale project such as a one-unit dwelling or a semi-detached or anything under six units, we would be requiring them now to have one tree per unit. And then if they were creating a project of six or more, they would need one tree or shrub per 45 square meters of required front yard, which is very similar to our commercial landscaping requirements. And this really just helps improve the quality of the development, adds more landscaping to our residential zones and it does add some buffering between these changing increases in density. So site design is another area we looked at. We are proposing a new section actually in the bylaw for site design, where we want to see some changes to entrances orientated towards streets, pedestrian connectivity between units and the sidewalk or parking areas, and then some requirements around improved design such as articulated front façades and requiring non-residential uses to front the street. And this, as again, helps improve the quality of development and kind of softens that increase in density. So amenity space was another section of focus and it's important to creating quality developments and improved living spaces. We raise our design requirements for amenity space so that all amenity spaces be accessible and have direct access for the residents, that any common amenity space now have lighting requirements and some other design requirements to improve their quality, such as size requirements. And then staff are proposing some changes to the amenity space requirements for size. We did take some concerns from PAC and the public and changed it slightly since PAC. We are maintaining the current requirement that under six units, no amenity space is required and maintaining our current standard of five square meters of amenity space for six to 15 units. Where we are proposing an increase in buildings is when they are 16 or more units, we would like to see 7.5 square meters of amenity space per unit and then require 50% of that to be private amenity space to encourage balconies. And this really is just to encourage in like kind of large-scale residential development, more common area balconies, more space than just your standard rooms. So these amendments were based off of best practices across Canada. We already had standards for amenity space, but we're just proposing this little increase. Many developers already do create these spaces, for example, in St. John, like the Venetian in Millidgeville, the Atlantic in the Central Peninsula. There's some large-scale projects like the Aquarius on Fairville. These all have private balconies, a lot of them have gyms, pools, common rooms, all of that sort of thing. So it's not unknown to developers to have these spaces. Parking was another area staff focused on. Well, we haven't seen as many Section 59 conditions around parking. They are a very common variance request, so we are again making amendments to reduce that red tape. For context, our current standard right now is one stall for every unit, pretty much of every type of unit, except for affordable housing, which we only require half a stall. There are some relaxations to parking in the city. You can see on the map above, anything in purple is an intensification area, which only requires 80% of the required parking. And then the Uptown exemptionary in gray actually has no parking requirement. I will note, though, that most developers do provide parking even in these exemption areas just due to the market. So what we are proposing is some changes to this, that while we will retain those former relaxations in the intensification areas in Uptown, we would also include lowering that requirement for affordable housing. from half a stall to zero stalls, with clarification that accessible stalls will be required per accessible unit and that they must meet the definition of affordable unit. We're also recommending secondary and garden suites be separated from regular dwelling units and then having their parking to, instead of one stall, going to half a stall per unit. And then we would clarify that tandem parking stalls are allowed going forward, and if people want variances for these new parking standards, we would require a parking city. This really just helps provide some clarification, gives a little bit of flexibility for anybody who's going to convert, and creates some more opportunities. So our final proposal for parking is that when a site is located within 400 meters of an intensification area, an employment area, a primary corridor, a post-secondary institute, or a dedicated transit route stop, that the parking for the garden suite or secondary suite be waived completely. And then we would also have some wording that would allow for, in the RL zone, we would waive up to one parking stall when four units are proposed or two stalls when six are proposed. Again, this is just for flexibility, as we were going to see some of these changes in existing buildings, on existing sites that may not have the flexibility to provide the full-scale parking. And just a last touch on public engagement. Of course, it's a very important thing in a process like zoning. So I just did want to show that we did do quite a bit of engagement. We did a Shape Your City page, which was live since September. It had background reports, it had facts and answers, maps, proposed zoning amendments, posters. It had everything we kind of had at our availability. We put it up there. We also hosted a kickoff meeting and an open public house on September 25th at Rockwood. And then we had a second open house on November 7th. And then we also advertised today's public hearing in The Telegraph and online. And our communications team has been great. They've been helping advertise all these events and the Shape Your City page by posting social media announcements, PSAs, radio announcements, everything you can think of, right up until each of these events and up to today. So I'll just close it out with the final statement that the entire purpose of these amendments is just to increase choice and affordability. As it's been said, we're not forcing anybody to change. You can still build a single-family home in every one of our residential zones, but this just allows for that flexibility to create some diversity of housing and built form, while encouraging affordability. And it's going to be a gentle increase in density. It's going to be incremental. It's not going to happen all at once. And this is going to allow for neighborhoods kind of maintain their character, but also to add to it. And it's also going to reduce our red tape and the need for rezonings in Section 59s. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so that's the end of the presenters. So what I'll do now is I'll open the public hearing. And so this is a public hearing for proposed zoning bylaw amendments regarding the Housing Accelerator Fund. So I'll ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against the proposal. I'm going to ask three times. So I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the proposed zoning bylaw amendments. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the zoning bylaw amendments. All right, I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the proposed zoning bylaw amendments. Come on down. I'll get you to give us your name, Mr. Turner, for the record.
Yes, Your Worship Members of the Common Council, Rick Turner. If I could, before I start, Your Worship, Season's greetings to you, Council, and a warm welcome to the new counselor.
Thank you.
Most of you know me from view surveys and consultants. I did submit something through Canterbury Developments. I've been doing small developments, both within and outside of the city, for a few decades now. Something I do kind of quietly. There's some of you would be aware, some not. The city bylaw reform is going to have some very far-reaching positive effects in easing our housing crisis. I certainly fully support it. The key to the housing crisis, whether you're a renter or someone looking for ownership, to get out of that, it's just not building homes and building apartment buildings and infill. It's overbuilding. So when someone comes to a forum like this and they're building and people are complaining, "Well, no, we have too many apartments. We have too much housing." Leave that aside, because the marketplace will dictate whether there should be more. And if we overbuild, then there's a chance that you're going to see some price stabilization in homes and you're going to see some competition in the rental market. That's where things will get corrected, so keep on building. That's what's going to help us out of this over time. Now, these changes can be a real positive for our community overall. What I'm getting at there, there's three areas that I noted in my submission. First one, right now, for young people to turn around and try to buy a home, pretty much impossible. Now, with competition in the marketplace, then you're going to see that reduction. That's going to correct itself in time. Over the years and over the decades, I should say, I've seen swings in the economy. And it will always correct itself, and then it'll go on an upswing. The pandemic has caused a real upswing, more than I've experienced in my 50-year career or so. So what that's going to do is it's going to help young people achieve things that many of us, you know, we went to work, decided we wanted a home. You work hard, you end up with your home, your family, and on it goes. The rental rates have soared. This is the second point. What that's done is it's made it difficult for young people to afford the rent and older people to afford the rent. And what's the result? People eventually end up potentially evicted, nowhere to go. Brings me to the third point. They become homeless. So as far as the homeless part of it, overbuilding is going to cause some slack, and maybe those people will be picked up in time and, you know, achieve a better life than what they have now. What's going on in our community, across the country for that matter, it's really a terrible thing. So federal government has stepped up and said, "We've got to do something." Everyone seems to be on board. We've seen it. It's across the country. So we can only be part of the solution. I'd like to just switch gears for a second, too, if I could. I've been communicating with the president of the Home Builders Association, which I've been involved with them for decades as well. He had done a fair bit of inquiring within the industry, developers, builders, and asked them, "What do you think of these reforms?" Some were aware of it, others weren't. He explained it. And he has in a submission there. And all I can say is there's a lot of excitement in the industry. You wouldn't know it by appearances tonight, but I'll vouch for it. There's a lot of excitement in the industry that things like this, the renovation market is going to go crazy, I'm sure of it. So...
That's good to hear.
Pardon me?
I see. That's good to hear.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, that's all I'll say to that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for being here tonight. Counselor Sullivan does have a question for you, Mr. Turner.
Thanks, Your Worship. Actually, no questions, Mr. Turner, but I appreciate you taking the time to come here and speak on this tonight. There's probably nobody in the city of St. John outside of our staff that is as familiar with our zoning and has appeared in front of council as much as you have. So I really take to heart the words you've brought and appreciate the time you have taken to speak on this, because you're not getting paid to be here tonight. This is something that's just important for you. So Season's greetings to you and yours, and just a big thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Counselor Redwine has a question for you.
Yes, Mr. Turner. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if, when you looked, did you look through everything for this, Mr. Turner? Like all of the proposed from staff?
Start to finish.
Start to finish, okay. Doesn't surprise me with you.
All 400-some pages.
Oh, wow. Good for you. I just wanted to ask if you have any concerns at all or any concerns about the comparables between the size of our city and some of the bigger cities. You know, I started really thinking about, like, if we're comparing to Hamilton and Kitchener, how close are we, you know, and does it matter? Does it matter that the setback would be more or less and amenity space more or less? Did you have any thoughts on that at all?
I guess I see this may result in us becoming a bigger city. It's inevitable. The only thing that I even noted in there that I thought, "Well, that's maybe a good point." There were a couple of comments by architects about energy efficiency and minor changes in the bylaw might have an effect on it. I didn't bring it up, although I looked at it and thought, "They are good points."
Yeah, they had some good points, yeah.
Yeah, it would be a good thing to look at in a future amendment, because don't slow down this process.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, you know, I think to be a bigger city, yes, but when you're comparing us to Edmonton, Alberta, like, that's apples and oranges for me. So, no, I appreciate your point, so thank you.
All right, that looks like it's it. But I also really want to thank you, because I do appreciate you being here tonight. I know you have a lot of knowledge, and your voice, when it's here, I think, you know, you have the ear of council, based on your experience. So it's great to have you here with us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments related to the Housing Accelerator Fund. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the proposed zoning bylaw amendments. Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing, and I'll ask the council team if anyone has any questions for any of the presenters this evening or for staff.
I do, Your Worship, when you get a sec.
Sure. Over to you then, Counselor Harris.
Thank you so much, Mayor Rea. Thank you, staff, for this. This is obviously, as Mr. Turner said, a pretty monumentous deal for the city for some of these reforms that we've been talking about. I know from where I sit as a fielder, who works with different folks in town, doing different developments, including my own, anytime we can get a level of clarity on sort of the direction of the future for the city is a big deal for securing funding and all that. So I just want to, I guess, tip my hat to staff and our consultants for their hard work on this. There are a couple of pieces to it that I guess I'm hesitant to approve. I'm looking for a little bit of clarification from staff, mostly around the use of parking minimums, covered entrances, balcony, those space.
Counselor Harris, you're cutting out...
They are all areas.
Counselor Harris, I'm interrupting you because you're cutting out for us. So I don't know if you can speak a little bit closer to your mic, or I don't know what's happening, but you're kind of going blank a little bit, and then you're breaking apart.
Okay.
That's good.
I apologize, Your Worship.
That's fine.
Let me just... Okay, so anyway, around amenity space, balconies, parking minimums, and covered entrances. Is there a reason why we're imposing these extras on developments? And I understand when we get up to the 16-units piece that there becomes equality and a standard, but there's a lot of existing buildings that can be rehabbed, which are going to have these minimums applied to them. So can I get some clarification as to why we're requiring parking minimums, why we're requiring balconies, and as some of these increases to amenity space? Because it is going to drive up costs for developers. Sorry, Mayor, was that clear? Could you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, that was better.
To Paris, so three questions: parking, amenity space, and covered entrances. So I'll tackle each one independently. On parking, we are not adding new requirements. We are actually reducing the requirements a little bit. And the reduction really means our base requirement is one stall per unit. What we are saying is if you build four units or six units, you get a discount of one stall or two stalls. So that, the idea there is to enable some housing that doesn't come with the added cost of parking. We are all used to having our homes and the vehicles, but there is a segment of society that's struggling. So there may be some developers that may want to build homes, not the added cost of the parking lot. So that's the reduction there.
So why... Sorry, I was just going to ask, why wouldn't we just leave that up to the developer, rather than impose minimums at all?
Could somebody rephrase that question?
I think, did you ask, "Why wouldn't we just leave that up to the developer?" Was that the question? Okay.
Yes, rather than impose minimums at all.
Rather than, okay, impose the minimums.
So we already have minimums, so we haven't gone the full tilt of moving away from all requirements. I think the reason for doing that is we are still a city that, you know, is quite geographically large, and not all the areas within the city are well-served by transit or other areas. So it's about striking a balance. We're also seeing developers are doing their own due diligence and providing some level of parking to meet the needs of their residents. They might even be exceeding this in certain areas. So since the goal of this program was to reduce barriers, we thought that reducing, even if it was that one stall within the four, that's a step in that direction. So that's the compromise that we've come up with. We have reduced to 20% to 25% from our parking requirements, thinking that's a reasonable balance. When it comes to mid-rise developments, and we see a variety of projects, sometimes projects are catering only to seniors, what we have done is we have created the option for the developer to come and say, "Here's a parking study that looks at other examples of similar types and suggests that we may reduce the parking by X, and would you agree or not?" So I think it creates room for more dialogue going forward, as opposed to taking a blanket approach of left or the other, because I think our streets may get impacted, and we need time to study and digest these impacts. So it's an incremental step in that direction.
Okay. Question two?
So the next item was amenity space. So this is a, we've gotten some comments. I think the reason we are starting to have this conversation is we are increasingly seeing a larger portion of our growth coming from medium-density developments, many more large-scale projects. And I think there you get a few types of players. Some players know their clients really well, will market the amenities, will design the building really well. There are others, you know, fellows who are trying to benefit from the market, and their desire is to not provide any amenity, not provide any parking spaces. So what we want to ensure is that there is some space within the site where there are 40, 50 families living, that there is some space onsite for them to socialize, get together. That space provides for some passive relaxation or recreation opportunities. Given that some of these projects are coming in areas where there isn't neighborhood planning, onsite amenity makes, you know, allows for that open space, which otherwise may not be present in the neighborhood. So it's that step in the absence of strong neighborhood planning that, you know, we are going in that direction, but we are not there yet. So that's number one. Number two is we are already seeing projects provide amenity spaces. A lot of the bigger-scale projects, the Venetian, the vistas, if you look at the amount of amenity space they're providing, they already understand their clientele and are already going in that direction. So this is not something new. We are just borrowing the standards from other places and moving in that direction. Halifax is twice the requirement that we are at. So we are not there yet, but it's a step. And, you know, there isn't a science or an art behind this. This is a question of making an attempt, seeing how it goes. If it's too much, we can always vary or have other conversations about amending these regulations. But it's about taking a step in that direction. The other reason for this is we want to see some private amenity space. And why do we want to see private amenity space? When you are in a low-rise development, you have access to your backyard. So you have places to do the barbecue, to sit outside in the sun and enjoy that outside experience. We want to provide a moment of that experience within the apartments, because we have, you know, folks downsizing and retiring in these buildings, and they're going to be there for a long time, 10 years, maybe 15 years. So it's a question of reducing this reliance on low-rise development forms and offering similar experiences within mid-rise developments. That is what is driving the desire to raise the amenity space requirements. And what we are saying is there is a lot of flexibility there. We're saying 50% of this amenity space must be private, and that can mean what? It can mean some units have larger balconies, some units that are more designed for affordability may not have them. So we are creating... So we are creating opportunity for flexibility in how the developer wants to allocate this. So we don't want to, you know, increase the price of all affordable housing units, but we want to make sure that that choice is available for the designers to, to navigate this on their own. Again, these are requirements that are being looked at in many, many municipalities and it's not overly prescriptive. It is a step in that direction. So more mid-rise developments is driving the desire for more amenity spaces than those. And again, we see a lot of smaller scale projects, 10 units, 12 units, and we felt that maybe it was too onerous for those projects to accommodate increased amenity space, so we've left those requirements the way they are today. So third question is covered entrances. So we saw some architects commenting about this. I think what we are trying to do is, one, we want to clearly demarcate where entrances really are so that when you're coming from the street, you have clear understanding where those entrances are. And we are in mad times. It rains here, it snows here, sometimes it rains and then freezes over. You want places before you enter the building that are, that are covered, that give you some protection from the environment. It could be the delivery fellow, it could be the postman, it could be you trying to get into the vestibule. So again, this is not something that designers don't recognize already. A lot of the developments deal with this. Sometimes the, the vestibule is recessed in the building to provide that, provide that coverage. Sometimes there's a canopy or a cantilever. Again, it's up to interpretation and choice, but it's just recognizing that as we start having more medium density buildings, that we need to pay attention to what makes that building functional and just borrow some of those, you know, design standards from other places and bring it to this conversation, which is what we've done so far. Again, happy to sort of get this feedback, and I fully expect that six months or a year from now, we will have to come back and make some tweaks to these regulations because we've adopted them at a rapid speed, and I think there will be an annual update with, with which we can tweak these regulations.
Right, Counselor Harris, are you good with that? I get that because I think this has to be, and did you say by February? Did I read that, the kid, February 2025, 2025? This has to be all done to, to satisfy the Housing Accelerator Fund. Jennifer Kirchner is going to step up.
Your worship, Counselor Harris. I could just speak briefly about our variance process.
Sure.
So in the city, the development officers, myself and, and members of the team, we have the ability to vary standards unlike other, other places in, in the province or other, other provinces themselves where all those things need to go to a committee for review. When an applicant comes in with a proposal, if they're dealing with a more constrained lot, if they're dealing with a heritage building or an existing building where there may be challenges to meet some of these standards, we work very closely with those applicants to see what can work on the site, where there can be give and take with variances to standards. So for instance, a lot of our nonprofits, they tend to meet a lot of the standards that we have set forth, things like amenity space and design, but maybe they need a variance on the parking. We work with them to make sure that they're able to meet the overall intent to create something that's functional and workable, but is able to meet their needs as well. So for instance, with parking, we might see a variance, but we're very much wanting to make sure that accessible parking stalls are provided. Those are very difficult to accommodate offsite, so we work with our colleagues in parking to make sure that when things are proposed to vary and it's going to impact other service areas and operations, that we're taking those things to account to make sure there's that balance. So we do see variances to parking, we'll occasionally see variances to amenity space or other design components because the site's specific context maybe won't work. But this provides a nice guiding framework for staff and for developers to work with under, work under and to strive towards as a kind of a, a set standard to set as kind of a goal for infill and new development.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Harris, are you good?
There's just, I mean, to me, your worship, the big thing here is that we're still making an active choice to police some of the behavior of our architects and developers, which is just going to add cost. So we, I mean, I, I think it's important that we acknowledge that, but I would, I would suggest that 9.23 and 6.1 of this be removed, and I haven't really heard any reason tonight as to why we should allow them to stay in their current form. But we're already hearing staff say, hey, there's no reason why we can't walk some of this back or change some of this in six to nine months as this evolves. Let's take a look at 6.23 and 9, oh, sorry, 6.1 and 9.23 now, because those are going to add some pretty substantial costs to developments, and I think we need to understand why we would do that in a housing crisis.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to head over to Counselor Redmond. You had a question, Counselor Redmond, on this? Can you put her thing on there?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Punkich, I, so a couple of questions. I mean, obviously, there was a bunch of comparators done with really big cities, Calgary, Edmonton, even Halifax is substantially bigger than us. So, you know, what, what do you think? Like, what are your thoughts on doing those comparators and then kind of implementing those regulations on a city of our size?
Through your worship to Counselor Redmond, the reason why we look at these bigger cities is because they go through much higher levels of competition and much higher levels of scale that we can learn from. So they've dealt with these problems too many times so that, you know, it's, it gets ironed out and we understand what works there that we can bring to our city. So that's the reason why we look at those cities. We are seeing the five to six story wood frame apartment buildings everywhere, and that is just a scale of developments that we see in many, many of those big cities. Now, we are not expecting the high rises, the 200 unit projects that some of these places are seeing. So it, it was about looking at that particular bill form, the regulations that have evolved through competition and time, and that was the purpose. So beyond that, I think we have a lot more flexibility, like our parking requirements are a lot more lower compared to some of these bigger cities. So there are some other differences. When it comes to amenity, I think we showed a range and it ranges from five to, to 10. So really, we are kind of, you know, somewhere in between there, but we think that our lots are sometimes bigger, we have the prevalence of, you know, land. It's a question of consciously thinking about what happens with that land. Like, we talk about buffering of spaces between low-rise and mid-rise, right? And that buffering space can be an amenity area. So by creating a requirement, it forces the developers to consciously think, do I need to put a few benches in there? Should there be some play equipment area? So the idea of creating those numbers is to force people to curate these spaces so that people can use them as opposed to just land being left as land, which is kind of what happens in many of these spaces. So that's the thinking behind this.
Just wondering, do you guys throughout this process, have you talked to our traffic staff? Like, was there any concerns? I mean, obviously, you're in planning, so you deal with traffic all the time as part of plans. But was there any insight as to like where the problems are and which kind of areas where problems may arise if we're really decreasing parking? Just the staff even have a heads up to try to get on top of it, any issues?
Absolutely. Through your worship, Counselor Redmond, we have received comments from our transportation engineers. There is some concern with the relaxation of parking. I think the biggest concern maybe the city is moving in one direction where we want narrower streets, for example, right, to reduce capital cost. And then on the other hand, we may be reducing parking requirements for some of these places. So again, I think there will be a moment where these two will converge. There may be a requirement for parking management. So right now, a zoning bylaw, all it says is you must provide these parking onsite. Where we are giving relaxations are in key areas, areas that are well serviced by transit, areas that might be in proximity of walking proximity to a university, to a hospital, those kinds of areas or commercial areas. So the parking relaxations have been given thoughtfully. We don't fully expect six units on every lot, like we realistically don't see that happening. But I think there may be further conversations required, but we are not moving in the direction of no parking. That's not where we are going. And it's, the reason is that we are conscious that there may be some streets that may get impacted quite heavily. So it's a, it's a compromising sort of move in that direction by reducing some parking requirements. Yes, our transportation staff are concerned it may have some impact on the streets during snow clearing, for example, those kind of moments. But we won't know that till we start to see what kind of growth we can actually see stemming out of this.
What do you consider well serviced by transit?
It is serviced by transit. I mean, you know, if you look at household incomes of St. John, they're, they're not as affluent as some of the bigger cities. So we need to then recognize that there might be populations that are using buses, that are using transit. So it's the intersection of these places where they want to live, right? And if that's where we want to unlock barriers, then we have to reduce what is the one barrier that we can move easily and that, that's parking.
I have more questions, Mayor, I'll come around, I think.
Sounds good. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. I would move the recommendation, but I'd like to make a comment, and I just think that, you know, when I listen to the team speak on this, you can really tell how much thought, effort, and time went into this, and I really appreciate that. And then when you hear Mr. Turner come up and is excited, he's here in his own time, not being paid, and he's here and he's excited because the people he works with every day of his life, you know, are happy about this. I just want to know that. I really appreciate your efforts, and I'll move that recommendation very proudly.
Thank you. I'll take a second there, Counselor Sullivan, on it. Okay, Counselor Sullivan, I'm going to you next.
Thanks, your worship. You know, I, I certainly understand that one part of the motivation for this whole process is housing accelerator fund and, and conditions that come with it. However, you know, what I'm hearing from the professional staff and professional planners that we have, this is what modern cities in Canada are doing. You know, housing accelerator fund push or not, moving into being a modern city, these are the right things to be doing to be a modern city. Kind of a yes or no, but I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Through your worship, absolutely, yes.
Hang on, thanks.
Excellent. Counselor Redmond, back to you for your last question.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. So I'm just, I guess I, I'm kind of in the same range as Counselor Harris on a couple of things. So when it comes to like having, you know, I think the parking might be a bit too much. I, I worry that maybe we should lax that a little bit. The other thing that I was thinking is, like, what, what got you guys to decide to change from one to five units to have no amenity space? Like, when I think about a smaller building like that, I kind of think about like washer and dryer service, maybe a bigger private room. So if they want to have guests over, they don't have a big apartment, but they could use this private room. So like, I kind of think about smaller amenities. And then when I think of, you know, the vistas, obviously, like, you know, some of them are having some mug, more luxurious amenities. So what made you kind of take that out of there?
Through your worship to Counselor Redmond, where we see one to five units, I think we are going to see ground oriented homes, right? Homes that have a direct access, because to create a staircase and whatnot, you need an economy of scale to that building. So most of the developments where we see ground oriented access, they're going to come from a side yard and go in, so that access to the outside is, is already there through the remnant yard space or, or rear yard space and whatnot. So where we see this gentle densification, where we expect most of them to have ground oriented accesses, I think there is going to be enough land to provide that amenity space. It may be up to the owner to say, is it divvied up into individual spaces or is it common open space? Additionally, we made one requirement where the entrance faces a side yard, that side yard will have to be two meters deep, and that's six feet, where you can have a couple of chairs and a barbecue and whatnot. So that sort of small detail thinking has gone into some of these moments, but we didn't want to regulate them because we expect naturally that space to be presented.
I just want to add on top of that, too, that we've never required amenity space for the smaller scale under six units, just because, as he said, it's usually ground orientated, it usually has access to yard space like that.
And I, I mean, I love being more progressive. This is generally a more progressive way to go, but when it comes to modern cities, one of them that I think of is Toronto. And unfortunately, sorry to say Toronto, I don't get the warm and fuzzies in Toronto, there's no green space. Like, I just kept seeing pavement everywhere, pavement, and I'm thinking, do they have amenities in these apartment buildings? Because if you don't, you really, you know, don't have that quality of life in your homes unless you have a single unit dwelling with a yard. So I don't want that kind of city, right? So there's got to be these sort of things. The other thing is I want to commend staff because I was very disappointed to see in some of the letters that people were okay with not having accessible areas for common space. That's not okay. It's not okay to have a rooftop balcony without everybody in the building being able to attend. If they want to have a Christmas gathering, oh, you can go, but, oh, sorry, you can't come because it's not accessible. Like, that's, that's not okay. So I, I commend staff on that, and I think generally, yes, there'll probably be some changes we'll have to make in the future, but I think overall, it's, it's really quite good, and I, I appreciate that part of accessibility that you didn't make those changes after the feedback was given.
Thank you. Thank you, Punkich. I think a lot of the accessibility is in the codes, is it not, for us? I would hope. There are no other questions?
Your worship, I can have another one.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Harris, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, this round two, I mean, I guess my gut tells me that we need to let the designers and the architects design, and our planners certainly need to be advising us on planning, and that's important to see some of this overlap. So my question then is, why, why are we imposing on architects' design for this, which is only passing on cost, people, which is only passing on the carrying cost of a building to renters or owners? So there's, I can understand some hesitancy around eliminating parking minimums. It's important to say, and I didn't hear it say, said tonight, there are cities that have eliminated parking minimums completely in Canada and international examples of housing success and avoiding the housing crisis completely who have no parking minimums. And it hasn't led to a, you know, pedestrian only city. It's, it's not that. I think there are mitigating things we can do, and that's fine, but we still are talking or passing cost on. So which architects did we consult with on this project, like, and get an idea that, that we're okay with this sort of imposition? Because I've certainly heard from three in the past week, not Mr., not only Mr. Milton Lynn, who used to be an architect with the City of St. John Heritage, now is a passive home architect, as well as Mr. Boyd, who's been here before mentioning this. So I have major concerns on imposing more obligations in a housing crisis that don't really benefit people, because if I've got a covered entrance and that shortens my runway for 20 feet because of the rain, that's not really changing my life, but if, if there's a massive undertaking for that project that costs get passed on to me, that is different. So I don't have visibility on that part of this, and I think I need to hear from somebody about some of that architectural engagement.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Harris. That's it for questions. What I guess I'll say just to wrap it up is I do appreciate being, being compared to, we look to those bigger cities. Yes, maybe Toronto's done a lot of things wrong, but they've done, they've been there, and that, that won't happen again for them in a, as they continue to develop. So I do want to be compared to a larger city. I do want to see what the best practices are across the country. I think that's the smartest way to do business. It's in, it's, you know, informed decision making, in my opinion. The other thing I would say is I understand what Counselor Harris is saying, but I guess for me, when I look at amenities, is what amenities do we cut out? Because how do we create equity in what we're building as well so that renters have some of the same niceties and some of the things that, you know, a person who buys a home can have? So how do we create that for the renting population? And that, so that's the equity question where I guess I am with that. So we've got, I have a motion on the floor to approve first reading by title. There are no questions, so I will, oh, Counselor Ogden, did you have a question? Oh, no, it's been seconded, thank you. So I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed?
Unopposed.
Motion carried with Counselor Harris opposing. So I will, okay, first reading by title.
Allow to amend the zoning bylaw of the City of St. John.
So I'll take into a, a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Sullivan and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed?
Unopposed.
Counselor Harris opposing, motion carried.
Allow to amend the zoning bylaw of the City of St. John.
Okay. Before I go over to Counselor Lowe for the final motion of the evening, I just wanted to say that on behalf of council to everyone and to my team, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. We don't celebrate Christmas and there are a lot, with our diversity, we see a lot of cultures that don't celebrate Christmas, but a lot of them do celebrate something at this time of the year. Wish you a happy holiday. It really is for me, I guess, the most wonderful time of the year. It's the time of the year I see the most generosity in people. The harbor lights will be on this Friday, but we will be cooking over in the market as a component of that and they are way up over their expectation. So that is wonderful to see. It's a time of joy for a lot of people and it's also a time of sadness for a lot of people as we remember those who've, who we've lost over the year and over the years. And so as I've said before, we mourn sometimes, it's a sad time, but we also think about all of the things that'll never happen because those people are gone. So it can be a difficult time for people, so be kind as well over the season. And I want to thank our staff. They work hard, they've had some, we've lifted a lot of big files this year, a lot of big files that have taken a lot of staff time and that have been on the books for the last few years, even some of them, because the lift has been so great. So I want to thank staff who work tirelessly, uh, and work with their counselors and every four years their boss changes. So it's not an easy job, but they do it and they do it with dedication and they do it with passion. And in my experience, I can always count on the city's team, you know, to be supportive of me when I don't know. I can call, I can get the answer so that I can make those decisions that I need to make. So I want to make sure that I thank staff. And I will say, I've written a few things that I wish you all lots of, in 2025, lots of hugs and smiles and parties and all kinds of good news as we go forward in 2025, because we're not going to see you until 2025. I don't think we're back here till like the thirteenth or fourteenth for council. We need a little bit of a break. We've been, this is the fourth Monday, I think, in a row that we've been here. So, uh, so anyway, so Happy New Year to everyone as well. Counselor Lowe, over to you. I've got a mover for adjournment. Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Thanks for everyone for being here this evening.